Just seems like we run from one thing to the other, Carl. And that's literal.
That's literal.
Yeah.
Yep, we do. Hi Bart. How are you?
Good.
Good.
But you couldn't ask for more beautiful weather right now.
No.
At what center?
Amer- American West Charity Center.
Oh, yes, yes.
To watch a region cross-country meet.
Uh huh.
And all, it's nice.
Yeah.
Oh, pleasant. Barbara and Carl, how are you two?
Great. How was your trip to Alaska?
Yeah, had a great time coming home with not many fish.
Uh oh.
Yeah, that's unusual. It's pretty lean. They hadn't eaten yet. Is this my name right here?
Yeah, it looks like it.
It looks like it. If you're Gordon, that's you.
That'd be me. Oh. Yeah. Last year we did pretty good. This year we're just, just early, you know? We were at the same time every year. I'm even thinking about changing and going in August and targeting the pink, not the silvers. The silvers are just coming in too late.
Oh.
Going the middle of August probably.
Do you go out on the ocean too?
Yeah. What we try to do is we try to catch them when they're coming out of the main open ocean into the islands before it goes up in the river. So you're trying to catch them, you know, in that transition when they're sitting there really feeding and try to put on some weight.
Okay.
Anyway. Lots of, lots of fish and not much catching.
What part do you go to?
Or in catch can.
Okay.
And from what I understand, if you get a little bit further up the coast, the water's a little cooler and it's on the normal run. These years they're claiming that the waters may not come in until it must hit a certain temperature and then up they come. Still a mystery. Well, Gina won't be here tonight.
Okay.
She is helping to set up for the pumpkin.
Oh, yeah, for the pumpkin.
She up there to that.
I saw her. I was, we were setting up our scene. Our family's doing one, so I left it in Gina's hands. She had, she had to fill in for me and all I have, all my responsibility is just grunt work, so she's really got her work cut out for her.
She works hard on that every year.
It's looking like it's gonna be pretty good. There's some, a lot of, a lot of activity up there today.
Craig in today? I heard him in his office, so I think he is.
Yeah, he was at some earlier meetings, so.
That's quite a shock with Janine, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Schwink?
Well, hello James.
It was a great meet.
Yeah.
It was neat to see those kids running their little hearts out.
They really did, didn't they?
Yeah. That's a, what, I don't know that there's a more beautiful running course in all of the world than out there at the American West.
I'll bet.
Wasn't it beautiful?
Yep.
The weather was perfect.
Mm-hmm. Sixties to run in and it's great. Other than the false start, was your granddaughter in the false start?
Um, the, I don't, she might have been. I, I wasn't at the, I wasn't at the start line. I did hear two gunshots.
Bart, I can't get my computer to work.
Well, I helped her. She beat her PR by almost a full minute.
Well, she's a happy girl.
Yes, she is.
That's a tough course too.
Yeah.
To do that on that course is something, actually it's a fight. What's her name?
Kaylee.
She runs for long.
Everybody wants to.
Are you connected to the internet?
Try not to, but.
I know.
I've got the calendar and I can't get out of the calendar.
My husband came in more. We need a vacation. He said, I know, but where are we gonna go where it's not the same thing that we're dealing with now?
Oh, it was a little girl.
I was in. Oh, okay. Yes, I, I saw her.
Yeah. She ran a good race. She was kinda crazy. Came up through thirteen people. She dropped like twentieth and about seventh.
I always do on my.
So does Springs is good.
So does Springs. I did go through there.
Okay, it's looking like it's shook. Like I've said before, it don't take very much to stump me.
That's okay.
Yeah.
It was just like normal life and I was sitting there looking around going, I think.
Oh, yeah, she, she came running and she's a lively, fun person.
She is, yeah, she is.
Where's Kaylee? Running across. Almost fifty years.
Yeah, and you know, it's braces.
Yeah, and we stopped, we stopped thinking grace and I was peeking in the door through the library and I'm like, yeah, yeah, this, this is what, they still have a phone. This is what I want, right? You wanna go back?
Gary and I stopped there and ate.
Right, right.
Stop in a little cafe there. Great. The food was good. They, and they make their own hamburger buns.
Oh, man.
It was good.
That's pretty.
It was good.
Pretty nice, really.
Yeah.
Everybody's got masks on.
Yeah. I, I practiced the Bear River help. I'm not getting to get one over there.
My two kids and their family.
Well, they said they were, you know, when we went in, they said they were encouraging them, but when we went in, I wasn't wearing them. They just didn't say a thing. Yeah, so I'm out there today, there wasn't anything passed by anywhere else unless families hugging other family members.
Yeah.
Give you one more thing to do. I feel, I feel like you probably don't have enough going on now that Better Days 2020 is behind you.
Yeah. Yeah, right. Yeah.
The problem is you get on this side of that and you think, how did I ever do that?
That's so true. I was talking to somebody about that the other day. And I thought, wow, how did I do that? But I had some really good help. I really did. Gina and Corina, yeah. Never would have taken place without their help. Never. Mr. John. That's David. Where is John? Am I in the right place? Oh, he's right here.
Gina, she's not gonna be here.
Yeah, he's right here.
Yeah.
James, did you hear about your cousins?
No.
The last week of their fishing duties. Somebody gave them all COVID. Now they're stuck on the island for fourteen days.
Oh, wow.
No fish, no, not gonna be there. They announced when we were there that somebody, they had not had any, any cases of COVID whatsoever up there. They don't know for sure who it was, but there was a guy that came and then he basically left. Back home. Down with it and I guess the whole staff. Those two cousins.
Did that happen after you went up then?
Yeah, after. Yeah, I dodged that one.
Pause it's due by December thirty first and you're gonna have to have a COVID test before you come or they're gonna take it when you get off the airplane and you're quarantined for fourteen days.
You're going fishing next year?
Well, you guys are going up for the reunion, aren't you?
Yeah.
What day is the reunion? They're early, aren't they?
I think it's June-ish, June, yeah, late June.
Busy. There should be some kings.
Yeah. Fishing's probably not as good as.
That's, that's best, but all unqualified.
Hi Carl. How are you?
Thirty pounder, eight thirty pounders better than a whole bunch of little tan.
I've never caught anything.
Other than I got a couple that smell and taste.
Well, Carl, you go that way. I'll go this way.
Other than that, I feel great. I had my temperature left last night, so. Well, it's scary.
Okay, this should be pretty, pretty damn quick. If not, we'll.
Yeah, I don't know.
I really liked that one letter that guy that wrote. They're all about you. He just written his letter and his complaints for them.
Guys have done very good. It's interesting, a lot of the states that haven't done nothing are still close down in that. From a medical background of a state.
You can have my chair, Jeff.
They don't have COVID up in high.
Can we get my stuff out of there?
This week, so they should arrive within the next.
That's too nice to know.
Visiting trips?
No.
By Sunday, Saturday, by then.
Every trip we planned, they.
Get an English.
They did. They did. We planned.
Okay, let's see. We don't have Dave here, but we'll start before him. Gina's not gonna be here. She won't be here.
She's doing the pumpkin walk.
Oh, yeah.
That's a big deal.
All right. Well, it's five o'clock. We'll try and be timely today and we respect your time and hopefully we can address any issues that you might have as we meet today. Thank you for being here. We need to excuse Gina Worthing. She is helping her community with the pumpkin walk and getting it set up in North Logan. So that's where she is tonight and not able to be with us, so we'll excuse her. We'll begin this evening by having our opening presented by Councilman John White.
And I'd like to make my remarks in the form of a prayer. Our kind and gracious Father in heaven, as we meet, we're grateful to live in this county. We're grateful to live in America. We're grateful to be members of this community and we ask you to bless this community, this county, this state, and this nation. As we go through this pandemic that's here and as we have unrest, civil liberties, we ask you to bless us and guide us and help those people that are leading our nation as well as our state. As we meet tonight, we ask you to give us wisdom to do those things which are best for the community in which we live and we thank you, Father, for all the many blessings that has bestowed upon us. We ask you to bless us as individuals that will always try to be better tomorrow than we were today. Try to make this lovely community in which we live a better place. These things we ask for and pray for in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
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 If you would, would you stand up and pledge allegiance along with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Do we have a motion to approve our agenda for this evening?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the minutes from our last meeting of September twenty second, are there any additions or corrections?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. I might just recognize tonight, for the first time in our meeting, our new county clerk, clerk slash auditor, Jess Bradfield, who's with us, sitting on the end. Welcome, Jess.
Thank you, sir.
We hope that you'll enjoy associating with us. We're looking forward to associating with you.
I certainly will.
Okay, any follow-up to our minutes from our last meeting? All right. Next on the agenda then is the report from our county executive, Mr. Craig Butters.
The only thing I have to report is that we are in the process of hiring the economic development director. We've had interviews. Narrowed it down to two individuals and I'm still getting feedback from the interview committee before we make that offer. So we're getting really close in the, before the end of the week. But likely make that offer and see if the individual accepts the offer.
Okay. That will be a great benefit to our county, I think. Also, on the agenda is the financial reports you all received in your packets, the September twenty twenty expense report. Any questions or concerns? Okay, we have two items of special interest. There's a request to hire an additional grounds maintenance position at the fairgrounds. Bart Esklin, our fairgrounds director, has made this request and, you know, Bart, do you have anything you'd like to fill us in on with this?
Don't be late tonight or you're gonna miss something. Guess moving right along.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Well, thanks for allowing me a minute to discuss this with, with you folks. As you know, things at the fairgrounds with the introduction of the event center have gotten quite busy, although this year has been a little bit of anomaly for, for all of us with what's been going on. But when we had those old buildings, they were single-season buildings. We had no use for really any additional staff during the winter. However, now with the, with the use of that wonderful facility, we're seeing use six, six and seven days a week. And the staff that we have becomes inadequate. The summer help that I have is able to maintain what we, what we do in the summer, but that created a whole bunch of snow plowing and snow removal that is, we're not able to do with, with heavy equipment. So that would be one of the reasons for my request. Or two of the reasons, both the, both the snow removal and the increased use. And then, you know, just the, the number of events that we're seeing in there on, on almost a daily basis, setup, tear down. We do have event staff, both Ron and Cassidy in the event center. But oftentimes, big events require much larger participation in setting up for those events. And then the last, one of my last reasons would be, and not to throw the sheriff under the bus, but because it's certainly not intended, but with the coronavirus, we have lost what essentially equated to a full-time employee by being able to utilize inmate workers. And we have not had that luxury for most of the summer and, and into fall and we don't really know when that will happen again. Certainly, we don't want COVID into the jail population. You know, it already has been there, but I understand the sheriff and his staff's caution in wanting to keep that out of the jails as much as they can. So with that, I'll entertain any questions, comments?
How does that? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Cameron's not here, so I don't see him here to address the finance part of this, but I did have him run the numbers. So what I would do is take one of my additional part-time staff. He's, he's budgeted at about fifteen hundred hours a year now, just right on the, the borderline of being able to keep him full-time. Make that a full-time position. Currently, we are paying him about twenty-three thousand, six hundred dollars for, for that part-time position. That would increase to an overall benefit, wage and benefit package of forty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. Thirty-one, let's see. Thirty-one in wages or payroll and another fourteen thousand, six hundred in benefits. What I would do to, to fund this, or partially fund it anyway, is to reduce my, my part-time staff by that position, creating that full-time position. So, and then, and I do have the budget remaining. In this year, we, we was able to keep budgets pretty slim or staffing pretty slim because it was a little bit of an off-year because, due to the coronavirus. So I would request this position be opened up immediately. There's money in the budget to do that for, through the balance of this year.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Bart concerning this issue?
No, I'd just like to compliment you. It is nice down there.
Thank you.
Yes, it is.
Very good.
It was a wonderful fair and, and thanks to, to you folks and the members of the fair committee. We, we had an awesome time down there.
Current full-time employees you have total down there?
Myself, Brett, or the, the two facilities and grounds, and then Cassidy and Ron on the events.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Art was there at seven o'clock last night.
Yes, he was.
With tables and stuff, so, yeah.
You didn't come till six-thirty.
Yeah, it was six-thirty and I didn't stay long. Just enough to do what needed to be done, so.
Well, we appreciate you.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bart. Let's see, is this something we need to act on?
We can address it in the budget opening that we're going to have in November. Is that sufficient?
Yeah, okay.
I, I would like to maybe address it now. I could, I could get, I do have money in my budget for the balance of this year. That would help me get through, through lead cleanup season and the first part of winter.
Okay, so I guess that's a good head nod from the county or something like that, the council?
Yeah, I don't know that we need to vote on that, but.
Yeah, was anybody having any concerns? I know what this is busy.
They don't either.
I don't have any at all.
No, I don't either.
I think we, it's needed.
Yes.
They are a lot, they have been a lot busier.
I think you have our unanimous head nod.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next, next item of special interest is a request to hire an additional cash county building inspector. Chris Harrell gave us a, a, a good summary in, in a written form, but Chris, anything you'd like to add outside of what you've already provided in that written request?
No, I gave, I put together a brief presentation, but I, I'm not gonna try to pull it up right now. I can show you that, but what we're looking at is the need to hire a new building inspector. What it really comes down to, the crux of it, is we have a increasing level of development in the county over the last five years. Even prior to that, we were seeing increasing development. We keep trying to patch that together with part-time folks. We hired someone end of last year to fill some of that piece. We've already extended way beyond what we need. So based on that information I gave you, you can see that per week, we're short about fifty-plus hours and that's a conservative estimate. So hiring one additional inspector is a minimum need that we're anticipating. Paul can give you a better representation for that since he deals with that on a daily basis, whereas I just hear about it and I'm trying to address it with the council, trying to get something in place so we can get the number of inspectors we need to keep up. And really, some of the things I'm concerned with have to do with doing good inspections, doing quality inspections that are thorough, so we don't miss pieces. When our staff starts to get stressed, we're gonna start to drop some pieces, drop the ball somewhere. I prefer that didn't come back to the county. I also wanna make sure our staff is fully trained and they have time to take time off. I don't think it's very fair for me to expect them to be burning the midnight oil and then they come to the end of their time period and they've gotta try to burn all this PLT right before they lose it. I don't think that's very fair of me to expect that of the staff. So the only way I can really address it and still meet all the development needs is to bring on another staff member to cover those bases. But that's kind of reflected in the stuff I provided, but I'm happy to take questions if there are questions on that.
Any questions for, it was well presented and I, and I think you, in my opinion, at least, you made the case for the need for that. You've also addressed budget issues and that the funds are there to cover the cost already, so I don't have any concerns. Do, are there questions from any of the other council?
Chris, this is, a few years ago, I believe, we're actually now replacing the one that we, we didn't replace a couple of years ago, a few years ago, was it?
So we had a part-timer. We had a part-timer on staff here and there to fill up some space and it became necessary at the end of last year to try and cover them because they weren't gonna be working. And realistically, at the time, we should have hired two people to try and cover those bases. So when I say we're, we've been patching things together, that's pretty accurate for what's been happening. And it's come to the point of we have to do something immediately to try and keep up.
So you are controlling development then just because we don't have.
Well, there is a problem with getting things inspected.
We, we, we try to keep up with those things, but like, for example, this week, we didn't work yesterday. So that pushes everybody into a short week and then we hit fall break, right? So that stresses things even more. As we come to the end of the year where all these guys are trying to get all their development done before winter really starts to take hold, depending on, I've heard different things of what our winter's gonna look like. It really affects how much time we have to cover all the bases for inspection. We're, we keep thinking that we're gonna see this decline and it's not. It just keeps doing this and the, excuse me, I think I have in there, the anticipation is we have at least four more years of this before we start to see a really drop in something. It's speculative, honestly. But we've been speculating it's gonna drop over the last five years and it's, it doesn't. It just keeps rising. I forgot your question now. I got off topic. Sorry.
No, you, you answered it, but you know, it's a few years ago, I remember there was.
Yeah, we had two retired.
Yeah, retired.
Yeah, and it's, it's really interesting right now in that field, it's hard to get, get, get building inspectors with certs. And I'll, I'll let Paul address some of that because again, this is stuff he shared with me. And the sooner we can get that out there and pick up guys who have the experience, we wanna pull them in and we wanna retain. Because that's, that's a difficult commodity to have right now is an employee who has a certification, is gonna be an effective inspector. So when we do get overloaded, they're able to step up and fill that role, whereas a new inspector was gonna, it's gonna be a challenge.
I worry how easy is, is it gonna be to even find one right now that quick?
It's gonna be a challenge.
Yeah, that's what, because of the demands on them and other fields paying a lot, a lot of money.
Oh, sure, yeah.
It's there too, so.
That's a big component of this is there's a lot to be made in the construction field right now.
Okay, any other questions for Chris?
Have you got one picked out, Paul? We got one in the, in the, in the shoot, just ready to go to work. We just gotta do it.
Yeah, well, there was a couple that we interviewed the last round that we didn't hire. They're, that are pretty good possibilities. We wanna look at them again, but if nothing else, I think we can get somebody up and going in about six months to where they could be a pretty good help to us. If they could get one of their certs passed, then they, then they can do quite a few things and, you know.
Now, this isn't a situation like me that you're getting a little age on you, Paul, and you just aren't able to get to the work as fast, are you?
Just, just smarter, work smarter, right? Not harder.
I'm sorry I gave you a bad time.
No, hey, I told Chris, I says I'll be surprised if Gordy doesn't call me up if, if I don't say something, so. Yeah, we, we think it's gonna go. Yeah, we, we think it's going to go pretty strong. We've got one developer that does a lot of work in our area. I think we did a hundred projects with them this year, and next year they're planning on doing four hundred just in our area. So that gives you an idea of what we're up against. It's pretty tough.
I was talking with one of the major developers in our area, and they have got enough work scheduled out and land purchased for ten years, you know, things keep popping, they got that much involved. So the building's going to keep going as long as we don't have a real turnaround.
We've tried to be very conservative in our estimates. So when I say four years, it might go longer, but I don't want to sell us short.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's, there's a lot to cover.
I know just from watching the building permits and that, that you guys are, you're really being stretched, there's no question about it.
If it slows down, I'll just quit. That's it.
Well, we used to, on that building, we'd have, went on a good month, we'd have three pages, now we have six.
Yeah.
And there's not much more you can see of. Do we do, do we need to do a nod for him?
Do we need a head nod?
Yeah.
Any concerns?
That'll come up in the budget opening for us, too.
Yep.
Okay.
But we'll get that rolling then, so we can get that filled, but we'll cover it with the budget.
All right.
Thank you.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item, Board of Equalization Matters. And, yeah. Approved Recommendations of Hearing Officers for Board of Equalization and Green Belt Appeals. Does this need, do we need to move into the Board of Equalization to do this? Okay, do we have a motion to move into the Board of Equalization?
Move to do so.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now meeting as the Board of Equalization. Craig, did you have some discussion on recommendations for hearing officers? Recommendations of the hearing officers?
Many of you participated in our Board of Equalization process this year, and it was all done by telephone this year. Hopefully, in the, in the future, we'll be able to have video capabilities, but we weren't able to do that this year. So on your iPad, you've got all of the appeals that have been approved by the board, the net value decrease, as you can see, there's a little over eleven and a half million dollars we made adjustments to this year. And then there's only one green belt appeal there that we made an adjustment to, so if you have any questions to those, I'd be happy to answer those if I can.
Any, any questions? I mean, all of us in one.
No change on the green belt.
Yeah.
I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve the recommendations of the hearing officers of the Board of Equalization, Green Belt Appeals.
Seconded.
Okay, move to approve and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you.
Did we have to both? Green Belt and the board, did you say both or just one? Yeah, Board of Equalization and Green Belt Appeals.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we exit the Board of Equalization.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Let's see, next on the agenda is the need to set a public hearing for October 27th for ordinance 2020-10, the Butcher Shop Rezone. Request to rezone 2.27 acres from the agricultural A-10 zone to the industrial zone located approximately 3565 West, 2200 South in Wellsville. Do we have a motion to set that public hearing? Well, and there's another one, too, maybe we can do it in one motion. Set the public hearing for October 27th for ordinance 2020-11, the BGTS Properties Rezone. Request to rezone 5.91 acres from the agricultural A-10 zone to the commercial zone located at 550 West, 8700 South, near Paradise.
I'll make a motion to set both public hearings on October 27th.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? Thank you. We have a public hearing scheduled for 5:30. We're a little bit ahead of time, so we'll jump ahead a little bit. We have some property tax relief requests to consider.
Mr. Chairman, I'll never mind, they're getting, I was going to say, I don't know if they knew they had, that we were done and they could go, so.
Oh.
If it's the first time the council meeting, they might sit there for a long time.
That's true. Thank you again for coming.
The ones, the Butcher Shop, and the other must be the Paradise.
Okay, we've got some property tax relief requests. I think we just do these as, as a council, so we don't need to move into any other, any
Yeah, that's correct.
Group, so that we have three of them here. We won't disclose names, but the first one is parcel 050760015. I presume everyone's had an opportunity to review those. Do we have a motion on that particular request?
I'm somewhat familiar with this individual, and, and I know that she was in my office and had a neighbor that was working with her, since she is from Russia. She, I can testify that she does have some significant chronic problems with her jaw and her, and her ears because of the accident she's had. So it does, I think it does rise to the level that we should declare this a hardship.
I agree, I think we could go with that, you know, and if we use our chart, there'd be twenty-three percent, I believe. And I'm fine, I'll make a motion to approve it for that.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor for approving the hardship request for property, I lost the... Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The next request is for...
Move to approve this one at forty-four percent.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
If we use the same reasoning, they're...
Zeroing quite a bit over the minimum, so I make a motion that we don't.
Approve this one at zero?
Yeah.
Approve this one at zero, okay. Is that your motion? Okay.
Denying it, isn't it?
Just deny it.
Yeah, denying it. I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? Thank you. All right, we're pretty close to the public hearing time, maybe we can just go ahead and go ahead with the public hearing for, let me get to the front of this. For the Paradise Dry Rezone, ordinance 2020-09. Chris, would you like to just give a brief summary for us? We've read it all, but sometimes... Uh-oh, excuse me.
Yeah, if you've, if you've read through that, you can see where it's at. General background on, that I'll give you is when the FR-40 zone was adopted and applied to the county back in the day, it was, we found somewhat inaccurate in places. The intent was to capture areas that were not agricultural or farmed and include those in the Forest Recreation Zone. We do find on occasion pieces of property that have been farmed and have then been zoned FR-40. In cases where that's occurred, the planning commissioners reviewed those, and the councils reviewed those, and determined that that was not a, a good reflection of what should have been applied to the property, and then rezone that property, the A-10 zone. This is one that's similar in that case in that it has been farmed in the past historically, and when the FR-40 zone was applied, it may not have been an accurate representation of what was occurring on the property. John can speak to that, that's more his back of the woods.
Yeah, I farmed it myself for, I don't know, lots of years. It's, it should be 40, it is farmed.
So when we looked at that, I should say, when the planning commission looked at that, they came to the decision that it would, made sense to recommend it for approval to the council as a rezone from the FR-40 to A-10 zone. That does change what they can do with the property. It primarily affects the existing cabin that, right now, is limited to 180 days per year for occupancy, would then be able to be full-time. Now, that's going to require some improvements when we look at road and health, safety issues when we talk about providing services to that home, primarily fire EMS type service is what we provide. So if they make that change and they, they pursue and change that from a cabin to a single-family dwelling, they'll have to address road improvements to the minimum standard that everyone else addresses. So there are some things, if development just looks like it wants to go in there, they're going to have to meet those requirements everyone else does. So it isn't just a, an immediate opportunity for growth there, there's, there's some work and some costs associated with it. But, I mean, back to the reasoning for what we've done in the past, it maybe shouldn't have been included as FR-40 when it was done before. That's been the stance, anyway.
Okay.
The current road on there, is that's all private road?
That's a county road by use.
Partway up.
Partway up, so to that location, yes. Up beyond that, as you keep going, it's, it stops.
I think it's a county road to the property line, but not to where the...
Does it stop at the gate? I'd have to look at my...
Yeah, it stops at the gate, I put the gate in, and it's never been graded above
Okay, any other questions for Chris? Well, this is a public hearing, and so we will allow the public to address this. If there's anyone who is here and would like to address this topic, we welcome you to the podium. We'd ask you to state your name, and, and then you're welcome to, to make your comments. Okay, nobody's moving.
Move to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have some initial proposals for consideration, consideration of action, and ironically, it is ordinance 2020-09, the Paradise Dry Rezone. The request to rezone the 320.24 acres from the Forest Service Recreation FR-40 zone to the agricultural A-10 zone located at 270 East Paradise Dry Canyon Road, Avon.
I'll make a motion that we waive the rules and adopt ordinance 2020-09.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, it passes. All right, we have other business. The UAC Annual Convention is coming up, November 18th through the 20th in St. George. Currently, everyone is scheduled to attend that with the addition of Nolan, so.
I got a question about that. Those of you that went to the one they had on the 27th of September?
Mm-hmm.
How did they, how did that work? What did they do for rooms, and when they, you met, you know?
It was a, it was a big enough venue there that they spaced you out if you desired. You could wear a mask if you liked.
Yeah. Just like the other, and you had your option to wear a mask.
Yeah.
We used to have a little building out by the golf course, but that's a lot smaller. This was a lot bigger venue, and people were...
You didn't ever feel cramped or anything, did you?
We ate outside, you know, we could eat outside or inside, and it was, I think it'll be similar down in St. George, they'll probably kick you outside if you feel like you want to eat outside.
Cool.
Yeah, it was, you didn't feel cramped in at all.
Craig, do we know if there's any sponsors at any of the evening meals?
Haven't heard yet, I'll, I'll check, see what that possibility is.
All right, council member reports, Dave?
I really don't have anything. I'm glad to see that Gordy survived his fishing trip, and he's back, but as far as...
It was a lot of fishing, not a lot of catching, so, you know, that's the way we came back.
But I...
We didn't, let's just say that we didn't over, we didn't overload the plane with fish, that's just...
I'd like just the welcome jest on board.
Yep.
County Council, and part, part of the entire council, so.
That's right.
Good to welcome him. I don't have anything else, so.
Barbara?
Just a little bit of report on the Trails Committee. I think Carly's doing a really good job, she's really looking into different ways to involve the public and the rest of the county in a lot of this trail issue. We had a call, a Zoom call today involving the Ogden area and some of the things that they are doing that maybe we could incorporate here in our county. She's doing a great job, I have asked her to do a presentation on November 10th to the county to give us an update on what's going on, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. John?
Yeah, I don't have anything in particular other than after I looked at how many houses are built, and listen to Paul to talk about, I think we ought to make less trails and less economic development, we're growing too fast. But other than that, it's good. And let's, maybe we ought to send a bowl of flowers to you.
That would be nice.
I'll see what I can pick up and maybe just go deliver them after meeting.
That'd be wonderful.
Yep.
Happy to do that.
Thank you, good suggestion, John. Paul?
I would say, and, you know, to John's point, we do have two good candidates for economic development, so hopefully they'll just be mildly successful. Good luck in, in picking the right candidate. But very, very good candidates, and then just encourage everybody, the Pumpkin Walk coming up in North Logan, I was there today helping, helping out a little bit with that and is shaping up, it's going to be a fantastic event, I think.
What's the dates on it, Paul?
It's later this week, I think we finish up tomorrow, it starts, it starts through the end of this week, and then they are closed on Sunday.
Okay.
Pro tip, go on Sunday, it's pretty...
When I was a kid, when my kids were kids, that was put on by one family.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
And then, and then they'll have a few days, Monday, I think Monday, Tuesday, next week, so.
Okay, great.
Gordy?
Great to be back, felt kind of bad I missed a meeting, you know how it is, you kind of get...
You really had to sacrifice for that.
Felt bad when I couldn't fly back and attended and go back at it.
Yeah.
Other than that, appreciate working with all of you. Spend the, spend the, congratulations to Jess and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. All right, with that...
I feel one thing.
He's trying to hold on so I can... He's trying to hold on so I can't beat his record.
You can close in closely so anytime you want.
I just want to share something here, it might take seven minutes. I was, uh, I would request that possibly within the next one of these council meetings, I would like to invite the, a, uh, the cash transit district, someone to come and maybe just, I don't know, report, but just kind of come and share with, I mean, they're getting a windfall of money and I'm getting a lot of complaints from people and seeing a lot of empty buses.
I would like that.
We had them here about, was it six months or so ago, I think they were here?
It may have been longer ago than that, but I did talk to, I have talked to Todd Butler and I talked to him this afternoon, actually, uh, wanted to get him here tonight, but it'll be next meeting, they'll come.
Okay.
Super, yeah, when they were here before, they just talked about what they did in Anderson. Walmart to Walmart, you know, back and forth direct line.
I, I gave him the contact information for an individual that's spoken to Dave quite a bit.
Yeah.
And told him he may want to give this individual a call, it would make our meeting go a lot better.
Thanks, Craig. Always the diplomat.
He isn't the only individual though that's talked with me about it. There's, there's actually several others that are just kind of wondering, especially when they got this big grant from the federal government and going to hear that.
I think it's the people that don't have service because we get complaints out there.
Yeah, so, uh, it'd be good for them to come just, I don't know, explain to the public.
What's going on?
Their existence.
I've asked him to explain the, the two local sources of funding that, that we've got, the quarter of a cent. It was voted on by the county, they've only certain cities approved, and then the one that the council just approved more recently, like May of last year, I think, that a certain percentage of that goes to, to transit district. We're required to give them a certain percentage of that. So they're, they're going to have that information available along with, you know, why we're seeing them spending so much money on that facility, transit facility.
Yeah.
Just to justify that.
Didn't they get only ten percent?
I believe so.
That was what we got down to.
We got down to ten percent.
But they got ten million dollar grant.
It could be great to donate it back to us.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Oh, John, that wasn't seven minutes.
We're adjourned. We made it.
We are going to go into the executive session.
Yeah.
We can adjourn you.
We can adjourn, that's right, we have an executive session.